Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the January ninth, 2024, meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. Happy New Year. This time, I'd like to ask Senior Pastor Glenn Swanson from the Bayside Baptist Church if he would come forward and give us an invocation, please.
Good morning. Happy New Year to you. Let's pray, please. Our gracious heavenly Father, we are so thankful for this day that you've given to us. Lord, this is a day that you've given to us, as your word says, let us rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you, Lord, for this new year. We look back at the previous year, 2023, and thank you for your blessings and your provision. Thank you for this governing body who has led us so faithfully and well. Bless them. Lord, we also think about today being National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. I just want to pause and just thank you so much for those who serve faithfully in our law enforcement. Lord, thank you most of all for those who have given their life and service to protect and to serve us. Bless them, bless their family. Lord, I also pray for those who serve us each and every day, be it their families, walk alongside of them, guide them, protect them. And again, thank you for their faithful service. And, Lord, we again, thank you for these commissioners, thank you for those who serve Calver County. I just ask your blessings on them each and every day. And, Lord, we thank you so much for all your grace and your mercy and especially the free gift of salvation that's given to us through Jesus Christ. And it's in that name we pray, Jesus's name we pray. Amen and amen. God bless you.
The allegiance identified by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Swanson. It's always good to see your smiling face. The next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve and adopt the agenda as submitted, but remove consent, item number three.
I have a motion, the second, that we approve the agenda, removing item three under consent. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you. I do have a couple of public service announcements. Most of you know that we are expecting a significant weather event today. Schools are closing two hours early. Their latest weather forecast is for heavy rain and high winds. They expect the heaviest winds to occur probably right after dark. So I want to make sure everybody's prepared. Those of you that live in low-lying areas know that whenever we get a southeast wind, it has a significant impact. And you can get sandbags at three locations from the county, Mount Hope, Barstow, and Appeal sites. And we just ask that you be prepared for the incoming weather and hope that everybody comes out safe. We also, I'm just looking forward to one meeting where I can start without giving condolences. But unfortunately, this morning, we have to give our condolences to Past Commissioner Pat Nutter, who lost his wife about a week ago. His wife, Millie, suffered significant sickness for several years. And Commissioner Nutter, I think it's one of the reasons he probably left was to take care of his wife. And she finally passed. And Millie was a lifelong resident of Calver County, served as an administrative secretary for the Calver County Distension Center for over 20 years. And our deepest condolences want to go out to Commissioner Nutter and his family at this time. Also, as Pastor Swanson mentioned, today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And we do live in a very safe community, and that's thanks to the efforts of our local sheriff and the Sheriff's Department and state police. We greatly appreciate all the work that they do and support them 100% in those efforts. Also, next Monday is Martin Luther King Junior Day. We want to take that time to celebrate and reflect on the life of Dr. Martin Luther King, quite a legacy he left behind. And we want to make sure that we take a moment that day to remember and make sure that we encourage all residents to find a way to serve others in honor of Reverend King's legacy. That concludes my public service announcements for today. That'll take us into proclamations. Mr. Grasso.
Who do we have that's receiving this proclamation? Let me introduce yourself.
Good morning, Commissioners. Amalia Pleakdam, I'm staff liaison to the Environmental Commission.
Good morning, I'm David Campbell, and I'm Chair of the Environmental Commission.
Come on up.
Abby Ibarra, and I'm a Commissioner.
I was looking over this proclamation this morning, and there's nothing I can say that isn't contained within this proclamation. It is a silent killer. And let me continue with the proclamation. Whereas radon is an odorless, colorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas found in Maryland. And whereas radon is the second-leading preventable cause of lung cancer, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency estimates that radon causes about 21,000 cancer-related deaths in the United States per year, with 2,900 of these deaths occurring among people who have never smoked. And whereas elevated radon levels are found in homes entering through cracks and basements and lower levels, posing a serious health threat to families if not addressed. And whereas any home may have elevated levels of radon and living in a home with an average of four picocuries per liter of air poses a similar risk of developing lung cancer as smoking half a pack of cigarettes daily. And whereas the Calver County Environmental Commission would like to raise awareness of the dangers of radon gas and educate the public that testing the home is the only way to know if a radon problem exists. Testing is easy and inexpensive, and if elevated radon levels are found, the problem can be easily abated. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that the month of January 2024 is recognized as radon gas awareness month. Be it further proclaimed that Calver County citizens are urged to become aware of radon risk, test their homes for the presence of radon gas, and to take abatement measures necessary to help protect their health and safety. Given under our hands and sealed this ninth day of January 2024, signed by all your county commissioners. And I wanted to ask one of you if you would tell the public where they can get these kits, how they're available in Calver County, and how to get them through the state.
I actually, through the state of Maryland, you can order them in the state of Maryland. But the county, we also hand them out on occasion at different events.
Yes, some of our events, we'll hand them out, yeah, because we'll purchase them with our funds to distribute them to the public.
We have a limited amount, but if you want to, they're very, they're $2.50 from the state of Maryland.
They're $3.
$3.
$3.
And you can mail them. They sell them to your house. I just had my house tested.
Did you?
It's very high.
Oh, no.
I need to have it abated, yeah.
You're going to have it abated. Well, it is a silent killer, that's for sure. And this is a good opportunity for all the citizens of Calver County to take note and to get your testing done.
Exactly. We never think about it because you don't see it.
You don't see it, that's right. That's right. I never heard of it news ago. I mean, and now, we have such easy access to get the kits and to get the problem abated and to save lives, so.
So hopefully, this proclamation will help get the word out.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, here you go. Let me give you all this, and let's get a picture.
First try, this is great. Get your blinks out quick. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda is appointments. Ms. Ashley.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ashley Staples Reed, Special Projects Program Manager with the County Administrator's Office. We do have quite a bit of appointments today, so I will try to make them as painless as possible. So first memo that we have on the agenda is for the 2024 Maryland Association of Counties Legislative Committee nominations, otherwise known as Maco. We're going to need a member and an alternate, so I will provide some background. So the work of the Maryland Association of Counties Legislative Committee is regarded as one of the organization's most important and challenging functions. Local elected officials serve as members of this body to set legislative direction, advocate, and communicate on behalf of Maco before the administration and the General Assembly. Maco's Legislative Committee meets weekly during the General Assembly session to determine the association's position on policy matters. Committee members are also responsible for contacting state legislators at critical points during session to encourage their local elected colleagues to support county priorities and pending legislation. Every year, each jurisdiction nominates a member and an alternate member to serve on committees, on the committee for the upcoming General Assembly session. There is no requirement to change a member or alternate each year, but notice must be given to Maco regarding the nominations. Discussion for the 2023 Maryland Association of Counties Legislative Committee, the Board of County Commissioners nominated Commissioner Catherine Grasso as Calver County's member and Commissioner President Earl F. Hans as the alternate member. There is no fiscal impact, and staff requests that the board provide a member and an alternate member for the 2024 session.
I move that we keep it as it is.
Second. Motion on the second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
Perfect. And then the second set of appointments is going to be for the 2024 Boards and Commission nominations. There are going to be several BOCC representatives on our boards and commissions. So again, background, each year, the Board of County Commissioners evaluates the appointment of its members to the various boards and committees that require a representative from the BOCC or their designee. This evaluation historically follows the selection of the board's officers and the Maryland Association of Counties Legislative Committee member and alternate. I will forego the discussion in naming all boards, if that's okay. But I will highlight that Ann Circle does not have a BOCC representative due to retirement, and staff recommends a redesignation of the Metropolitan Washington Air Quality Control Committee representative from Carolyn Sunderland to Jessica Catano. There is also a recommendation to nominate Deputy Director Bob Branham to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. So conclusion recommendation, staff requests that the board review, approve any changes, and if so, any representatives to the board of committees. So I will say staff has recommended that you appoint Linda Turner to Ann Circle, Jessica Catano to the Metropolitan Washington Air Quality Control Committee, and Bob Branham to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, while leaving all other boards and commissions as is.
I'll make the motion to leave as is with the new appointments that you just discussed.
Second. I have a motion, the second, that we adopt the recommendation that the committee representatives. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consent. We have several items under consent today. Item one, Department of Public Safety, fiscal year 2024, Maryland Institute for Emergency Medical Service Systems, Advanced Life Support Education Grant Agreement. Item number two, Department of Finance and Budget, fiscal year 2025, State Aid for Police Protection Application Certifications. Item four, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation, ITB 2024008, excuse me, Resurface Repair and Remove Edward T. Hall Aquatic Center Pool's Roof. Item five, Department of Community Resources Memorandum of Understanding with Calver County Health Department for Highway to Health Program. Item six, Department of Public Safety, FY 2024, Maryland Professional and Volunteer Innovative Cancer Screening Technologies. Is there any objections to those items listed under consent today?
I have none.
None.
Hearing none, those items will be adopted as presented. That brings us to new business. Item one, Department of Community Resources, Public Transportation, Approval of Agency Safety Plan for Bus Transit. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Commissioner Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources, and Sandy Wobbleton, our Division Chief for Public Transportation, is here to read the memo for you. Okay. Subject, Public Transportation Approval of Agency Safety Plan for Bus Transit. Background, each transportation agency that receives federal funding is required to develop an agency safety plan, also known as Safety Management Plan, SMS Plan, for bus transit. Calver County Government SMS Plan was approved by the Board of County Commissioners, BOCC, on January 5th, 2021. The SMS Plan is reviewed and updated every year in July, requiring approval from the BOCC before submission to the Maryland Department of Transportation, Maryland Transit Administration, M.MTA. The annual discussion, the annual review of the Agency Safety Plan for Calver County Public Transportation has been completed, and the safety performance measures have been updated. The policy updates have been reviewed for legal sufficiency. Policy updates were also reviewed by Human Resources Director Melanie Woodson, along with risk management personnel, who determined there is no need for an amendment to Chapter 86 of the county code since this policy is exclusive to transportation services. Fiscal impact, none. Conclusion recommendation, staff requests the Board of County Commissioners review and, if appropriate, approve the updates to the Agency Safety Plan for Bus Transit. No signature is needed. Calver County Public Transportation will provide the required documentation of plan approval to MTA.
Morning. Morning, Sandy.
How are you?
I'm good. Well, yeah, I'm sort of good.
I'm the same way. I don't look crazy this morning.
So you want to talk about the plan? Comments? Just no? Questions? Motion? Discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the updates to the Agency Safety Plan for Bus Transit.
Second.
I have a motion, the second, that we approve the updates to the Agency Safety Plan for the Bus Transit System. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. That was great. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Next item under new business, Office of the County Administrator, fiscal year 2024, Connect Maryland Home Stretch Difficult-to-Serve Properties Grant Application. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. Danielle Russell, Grants Management Program Specialist with the Office of the County Administrator.
And Ashley Staples Reed, Special Projects Program Manager with the Office of the County Administrator.
I'll read the memo. Background, on December 15th, 2020, the Calver County Board of County Commissioners committed funding to complete the buildout of Comcast Cable Infrastructure throughout Calver County. Calver County Government, in partnership with Comcast Cable Communications LLC, has obtained two grants in the past to fund phases one, two, and three of the buildout. Fiscal year 2021 Infrastructure Grant Award of $2,259,694 connected 325 homes. And the fiscal year 2023 Infrastructure Grant Award of $942,223 will connect 36 homes. Discussion, Calver County Government, in partnership with Comcast Cable Communications LLC, submitted a response to the Connect Maryland FY 2024 Home Stretch Difficult-to-Serve Properties Notice of Funding Opportunity issued by the Office of Statewide Broadridge. The county and Comcast seek a grant to defray the cost of constructing connections from existing networks to the residences of Calver County. Assuming the funding maximums for the county, Comcast, and state contributions, 137 residences will receive connection at a total cost of $2,200,000. If individual connections are less than the maximum cost, the number of connected residents will increase. These are middle and last-mile residents located in the county's most rural areas. Calver County's Comcast Service Extension Map is available on the Comcast Buildout page of our county website. Fiscal impact, the county is asking for $1.1 million from the state to cover a maximum of $8,000 per address. Comcast is willing to fund 33% of the total cost of all approved addresses, up to $4,000 per address. The county will fund up to $4,000 per address over the approximate drops, revisable based on assessed needs, so that Comcast can accommodate longer lengths depending on the amount of funding available. Conclusion and recommendation, staff requests the BOCC review and, if appropriate, ratify the board president's signature on the FY 2024 Connect Maryland Home Stretch Difficult-to-Serve Properties Grant Application.
Happy to answer any questions.
So you know what? I'm going to ask how long for the buildout's done.
So I did get some end-of-year numbers, and I will give you a more detailed update within the next 30 days. I would like to try to get a response back from this grant, that way I can include that on my next update. But so far, we have done 157 homes, which is about 23 miles of infrastructure, at about $2.4 million. We are in progress with 53 homes, and we still have an outstanding 174 homes. So we're a little bit over halfway there, if you include the pending projects, which are slated to be done within the next couple of months. So it is definitely taking longer than anticipated, a little bit longer than Comcast had projected with us when we agreed to our Phase III MOU. But we are getting there. I'm meeting weekly with Comcast, and they are giving us updates, and they are letting us know what they're doing and what hurdles we are having. Big hurdles with the easements, it seems to be a common theme with my updates, but we are trying our best.
So so far to date, off the top of your head, do you know what it's cost to do the buildout?
So for Phase III alone, it's 2.4.
Total?
Yeah, is what we're at. So we've closed out Phases I and II, which is our Barstow build, and then some miscellaneous, so those are closed out. So we're at 2.4.
For this phase?
Correct. And we will be utilizing ARPA funds for that.
For the three phases, it's like 6 million, 5 million, something?
Close to that. So it's the 2.2 we contributed, I believe it was, don't hold me to this, I think it was like 1.8. So, yeah, we're up there in the millions in regards to this whole buildout.
And so far, we've gotten grants to cover most of that?
Yes. So we've been able to defer actually having to use general funds and franchise fees.
And a lot of happy citizens.
Yes, some happy, some not so happy with the process, but I am happy to take any calls from citizens in regards to their questions and concerns.
Absolutely.
We are navigating it.
Well, Danielle, we appreciate your work finding grants and chasing money for us.
Yes, definitely.
Any other questions?
So, Ashley, so we still have, after this Phase III, we still have 174?
So the 174 is integrated within Phase III. So they're outstanding.
Okay.
I will say, one stipulation with this grant, if we are to be awarded, there is going to be an advertisement period that we have to do. So essentially, we're going to have to reopen a signup period. That'll be at the board's discretion for how long, so we'll come back to you guys with that update. I do know right now we have four homes that we have denied because they have signed up post-cutoff period. So there are a couple houses out there that we could still service with this grant if awarded. So, and like I said, if once we're awarded, we'll bring that back to you guys with the award.
Okay, thank you.
Can't be many left. We've been doing this for three years now.
I know.
Any other discussion? Motion?
I move that we ratify the board president's signature on FY 2024 Connect Maryland Grant Application.
Second. I have a motion, the second, that we ratify the board's president's signature on the FY 2024 Connect Maryland Grant Application. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, Department of Public Works, Dunkirk Lease Space for the Sheriff's Office. Sheriff, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, how you doing?
Good.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Tom Jones.
Good so far.
Tom Jones, Deputy Director for DPW of General Services. Today, I'm joined with Sheriff Ricky Cox and Lieutenant Colonel Payne.
Thanks, Tom.
Absolutely. We are here to read two memos, two separate memos, if you will, I'll read each one, I'm separately, I'll read through. The first one, the subject is Lesby Lease Space for Sheriff's Office. On May 2nd, 2023, the Board of County Commissioners directed Department of Public Works, General Services Division to search for commercial space supporting a substation for the Calver County Sheriff's Office in the Lesby area. Following extensive search, the space at 117808C Truman Road in Lesby met the criteria. The building is approximately 2,400 square feet, providing a substation for the county's southern end would allow CCSO to stand their jurisdiction during their rotation. Discussion, Calver County Government and the Lesby Town Center LLC have agreed to use space for government purpose to house the CCSO. The agreement defines property duties, responsibilities, maintenance, and overall use. Physical impact is yearly $50,000 with a 3% increase each year. Conclusion recommendation, the Department of Public Works, General Services Division's request that the Board of County Commissioners review and, if appropriate, approve the agreement and authorize the board president to sign on behalf of the board. The second memo is in relations to the Dunkirk Lease Space for the Sheriff's Department. On May 2nd, 2023, the Board of County Commissioners directed Department of Public Works, General Services Division to search for commercial space supporting a substation for the Calver County Sheriff's Office in the Dunkirk area. Following an extensive search, the space at 10500 Southern Maryland Boulevard, Dunkirk, met the criteria. This building is approximately 1,800 square feet, providing a substation on the county's northern end would allow the CCSO to stand their jurisdiction during their rotation. Discussion, the Calver County Government and Ice Vault LLC have agreed to use space for government purposes to house the CCSO. The agreement defines property duties, responsibilities, maintenance, and overall use. Physical impact, yearly lease agreement is $75,600, monthly expenses $6,300 with a 2% increase each year. The Department of Public Works, General Services Division requested Board of County Commissioners review and, if appropriate, approve the agreement and authorize the board president to sign on behalf of the board. The last thing I'd like to add in, that's not stated there, is that actually the Sheriff's Department has provided the funding between now and fiscal year FY '25 to help support this operation, so.
I'd like to ask the sheriff to expand on this, not just the properties that we are looking to lease, but what this is going to do for the community, what your mission is and what the end result we hope will be.
Absolutely, thank you, Commissioner. This is a plan that I wouldn't have put in place in my first year as sheriff. As our current building is deteriorating, I think we all know the building that we do operate out of. But my plan is to have a true presence of our deputies and our staff in the two areas of Dunkirk and Lesby. And our current building that we currently reside in is going to house the Prince Frederick Response Times. What we've been doing, as the traffic is getting busier and busier on Route 4, is putting the deputies in those locations and keeping them there, that's my goal. They will not come out of that patrol area, so for the citizen out there, that's going to improve response time and a true presence, like I said in the beginning, of our deputies in those areas. And I've heard concerns in the Dunkirk area of it changing up there, and that's very concerning to me. As you've been in those meetings too, with me too as well, Commissioner Grasso. And I took it to heart, and I think this is a true plan that'll work out for not only the Sheriff's Department, but it'll also work out for every citizen that lives here. And it's my duty as the sheriff to improve those response times and to have those deputies actively engaging in their communities where they work. And I think this will do all of those that I'm talking about.
Over the last three elections, I know one big point of concern for our citizens was police presence within the community. And you think, well, how would we do that? Because we are so spread out, and this, to me, is an answer to their prayers.
And then too, also, like you just said, if somebody has a concern or they need a deputy or they just, as me as the sheriff, they want to, as a Dunkirk community or a Lesby community wants to talk to me, we can facilitate community meetings with inside those buildings. If somebody wants to file a report, if somebody has a child exchange in the Dunkirk or Lesby area, they don't have the drive to Prince Frederick. I mean, that's better for them too as well. And at the end of the day, it does save money, like Mr. Tom Jones, we are funding this through our budget, which I give all the credit to the man to my right as we went through our budget in our first year, and we've saved money. And this is where our plan is, and we're allocating funds in our own budget to accommodate this mission that I have throughout this year to our new budget. But like I said, it's going to have services available to the citizen. patrol vehicles in Prince Frederick, so all of our deputies will stay in the area, they'll have their gas cards, and they'll, that's the main goal and intention of having a North and a South District, like every other police department has in the state. So we're following suit. Me as the sheriff, I think this is forward-thinking in our future, and I think we're not we're not gonna just stop there, we're gonna make it even better each and every year as we move forward.
Thank you.
How about the time on this, Sheriff? Twenty-four seven we run in, is it gonna be? How's, give me some layout.
Yeah, so we'll have our command staff, which we broke down, so our command staff within our patrol bureau. My plan is to have twenty deputies assigned to the Lesby, Prince Frederick, and the Dunkirk facility there too as well. So I have my command staff all the way down to our responding deputies, and that gives them the responsibility of their area, as we we currently don't have, and I think that was something I wanted to change, this coming as the new sheriff, that we're gonna have the responsibility of those command staff to their area and give them more responsibility. But the timeline with Mr. Tom Jones, it looks like we're gonna be able to open these facilities February first, to have those, our patrol schedule is changing, and having those deputies in the in the area of January twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Moving on into the future, I would like to have clerical staff in there, dispatchers like we do at the Prince Frederick locations, like we've talked about before, but I think that's a future, like I said, forward-thinking that we will have. I would like to have a phone in there if the deputy's out in the Dunkirk or Lesby area and he's not inside that office, that they, somebody, a citizen can pick that phone up and it can transfer it down to our Prince Frederick location, which will have a deputy respond to that area.
Great, thank you.
So when you're first open, there might not be fully staffed, so if a citizen walks in the door, you're gonna have availability?
Yeah, there'll be there'll be availability from a context, and it's gonna be a soft opening, if that's the best way to put it, with eventually fully staffing, fully operating it, just like just like it is in Prince Frederick. We're looking to move, I mean, take it even a step further, we're looking to move a toximeter up there in Dunkirk, so they don't have to come down for the D U Is. We're looking to have some holding areas there. The jails onboard, they're going to have transports from there, so the deputy doesn't have to leave. The jail van will go down and pick up prisoners that that need to go to the detention center, we'll bring them there.
Does the jail have ample staffing now to do that?
Yeah, they do. We've met with them. They're actually happy to do it, gives them, you know, gets them out of the jail a little bit, and and they like doing that kind of stuff. Everything's built out, I guess, to be for efficiency in mind, right? That's the biggest thing, because we have to do the most with the with the least amount that we can, and that's what we're trying to do. You know, we've had some meetings when we first took over, and I think that was kind of some of the some of the things we talked about, was trying to maximize our current staff before we go any further, and this is this is down that road for that, so.
I think the most important part is having that presence in those areas. I think that a lot of that that office being in Dunkirk too as well is gonna deter some of those folks coming in from the north, like we've seen the last couple of months that our deputies have made accountable, and me as the sheriff, I think that's very important, as well as Lesby. Because I, my ideal for Dunkirk and Lesby locations, it was first Dunkirk, but this Lesby location came available, and it's and it's will make suit for those three areas, and again, forward-thinking and to the future.
So just for the public's information, where is the Lesby and the Dunkirk location?
So the Fair Landing Road is the Dunkirk location, the old SunTrust Bank. I'm not going in the banking business, but is that's where you're thinking?
You got a vault?
Yeah, it has a vault that's great, has property room where we keep people's property, citizens' property in there and keep it safe. And the Lesby location is the old Bank of America right behind the fast stop on H C Truman Road.
Okay. Excellent.
And they're very, they're in areas of a lot of traffic, so being visible out there on the road, the shopping centers, quicker response times, and I think that it will deter a lot of those folks that are coming out and thinking they're gonna do crime here in Calver County, so.
Park some spare cars there, just for visibility?
Absolutely. We have a, we have a few deputies that we're we're hiring too as well as during the hiring crisis of police nationwide, we've done great at it, it's again, forward-thinking, I like that term. We're out there actively recruiting quality officers. A lot of the, one officer that we interviewed is a M P D officer, and he would have to commute from the district, and he would leave his car there essentially, so it'd be a presence too as well, so.
That's good.
Steve Hall talking to you these days?
Oh, yeah, we we've talked well.
I understand you got some of his employees, is what I was referring to.
Correct, it's, again, it's it's not something that we're actively doing, I think it's the culture that we're building at our office, and I think people enjoy the incident I talked about, we just had over the weekend with Commissioner Grasso, I was with her on Sunday with a stolen car from P G County. I think that the culture that we build here and 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 we actually do police work here.
Right.
I think that attracts a lot of folks that wanna work here, so, and I wanna keep it that way.
How many did you get from there?
Three.
Really?
Three out of a stolen car, and all of them are teenagers.
So how many new hires did you get?
From Saint Max.
Oh, four total throughout the year. We have two that were swearing in next Tuesday, and one was a M T A officer, Anna, that she worked for us, but she had told me, we interviewed her, that that she likes what myself and the Colonel were doing here, and she would like to come back and work. So she was a former deputy, very professional female that that I really liked, and she'll be starting next Tuesday as too as well.
Does she have to go back there prepared to apply, or you go?
She does not. She's already Maryland certified.
Good to go.
And the other M P D officer that we interviewed is on court, so you know they're good.
Oh, really?
Yes. That last name is very valued at our office, if you will.
Jimson?
Yes.
So it puts us within one of our vacancies.
Good.
And to say we're almost fully staffed, they look at me like I'm crazy when I go to the meetings, but we are not only there, but our detention center too as well. So I mean, Charles County's forty vacancies in Charles County for corrections, I mean, that's crazy. Their holdovers, they're fixing it with overtime, so if anybody's listening out there, Charles County Detention Center is hiring. I mean, that's a good start for any young individual, like I I talk to the schools, so.
Absolutely.
Well, this this board fully supports your efforts and your work. You know, we believe in a safe community, we believe that when you commit a crime, you need to be apprehended and do your time, so.
Like I told you this morning, I truly enjoy that. It helps me easier when I get the support of the commissioners, and they're, we're like-minded that we wanna keep Calver the safest county, and we're keeping it safer. As our numbers are coming in throughout our first year, they look very well, and we're gonna publish those in the next couple of weeks.
Because if they find out they can get away with it, there's only one thing that's gonna happen, and we don't wanna see that happen.
Correct.
We we've talked about a billboard at the county line, you know, you commit a crime, we are gonna get you in every way we have to.
And we appreciate that. Thank you.
One hundred percent.
Mr. Harvey's back there smiling too.
Yeah.
He's very supportive of us too as well, I appreciate Mr. Harvey too as well.
That was, I guess he can speak, but that was one thing, we we met with with him as well, and he's gonna participate in the districts as well.
If I could, Bob Harvey, State's Attorney, I wholeheartedly endorse this proposal. When the sheriff mentioned the deterrent effect, just the mere presence of a police substation in these areas of our county has got to have a deterrent effect on people coming in. And and as the sheriff can attest, that's what we're seeing. People coming into this county with guns in the car, committing crimes, thinking that they're gonna be able to get away with it if they speed off. And that's just not how we operate here, and that's not how we're going to continue to operate. So I'm very excited about this proposal and support it one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Well, I don't know what the stat is, but a very significant percentage of the crime we have is from outsiders coming in, it's not from within.
It is.
But yeah.
And I know you see these bloopers and all on stupid criminals and so on and so forth, I'm wondering when they are going to get the word that you come into our county, you do the crime, you pay, you know, you pay with the time, and we prosecute very quickly. When is the word gonna get out that these dummies are gonna learn that we're gonna burn them?
I think people like us, the sheriff commissioners, if we keep talking about this, the the word does spread, and we're not gonna tolerate that, and I agree with you.
Well, citizen safety is paramount, I think all of us, you know, have said that time and time again, so do whatever you gotta do.
And like I brought up, the citizen, they can come in, we can talk, if they're having an issue, we can use those facilities too as well. If you guys wanna have a meeting there to talk to the Dunkirk or Lesby area citizens, we can use that, facilitate that too as well, which I think is not only good for us, but the citizen too, and that's what we gotta think about.
For sure.
And work with C M R and let everybody know that it exists, get it out there, yeah.
We're gonna do a, they're, they're, they're ready for the job, actually, they're doing ribbon cutting, we'll get that out to you, I think it's gonna be March fourth or something like that, I'll get the date to you.
Thank you, good.
Very good.
More motion?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we approve and authorize the president to sign both lease agreements on behalf of the board.
Second. She changed up my motion. I have a motion and a second that we authorize the president to sign the lease agreement for both Lesby and Dunkirk police substations. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Commissioner Hans, thank you for bringing up that storm today, I think that's something we need to take seriously today, and we will have extra personnel out tonight too as well, so.
Just want everybody to be safe.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good year.
Thank you.
You too. Our next item under new business is Department of Public Works Lesby lease, oh, no, we just did that, sorry. Item five, Board of Elections, Election Board Outreach Plan. Ms. Hatfield, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good to see you all. Yes, good morning, Gail Hatfield, the Elections Administrator for Calver County. Basically, I'll read off the memo, but it's informational is what I'm here today for, is to give you an update as to where we are with the polling place plans and what we're in the process of doing for right now. Gail, would you introduce who you're with? Oh, I'm sorry. And this is Kristen Scott, she's my executive administrative aide. Thank you. Good morning. As a background, I guess I would come closer. As a background, on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the State Board of Elections approved both our early voting and our polling place plans for the upcoming twenty twenty-four elections in Calver County. The plans included several changes, including moving the Northern Early Vote Center from the Fairview Library to the Ward Farm Park. There are several polling place changes also for Election Day. The first one was changing the precinct boundary between the Precinct One Three, which is Saint Leonard Elementary School, and Precinct One Four, which is Mutual Elementary School. Changing the location of the polling place for the Precinct One Five, which was Patuxent Appeal Elementary Campus, to Southern Community Center, which is twenty Appeal Lane in Lesby. Changing the location of the polling place for the Precinct One Seven, which was Mill Creek Middle School, to Patuxent High School. Also changing the location of Precinct Three Six, which was Northern Middle School, to Northern High School. And then also, the last one was changing the location of Three Seven, which was the Fairview Vote Center, to also Northern High School. Under discussion, the Calver County Election Board is developing an outreach program to inform all the voters of these changes. The board will begin to mail out voter notification cards to all affected citizens by January nineteenth. Each card will have a bright label on the outside informing that voter that their polling place has changed and they need to open this immediately. Additionally, we are going to post the information on our social media for voters to expect mailings to arrive in their mailboxes soon. We've also worked with the county media, and we have radio announcements that are also going to go out on the fifteenth, the sixteenth, and the seventeenth prior to us mailing them. There's also going to be a second mailing, which will be a postcard that's gonna be sent right around March first to all the Dunkirk voters, Saint Leonard voters, and Lesby voters where any of these changes were taking place. This mailing will not only list all the voters' polling locations, but it's also going to have on it information about absentee voting and early voting on this postcard also. The final mailing before the primary will be the sample ballot, which is scheduled to be mailed out on April twelfth, twenty twenty-four. This will also have the polling places' locations highlighted again on the front page of that. Other outreach efforts, including we're contacting local organizations to ask to speak at their meetings, as well as developing social media posts, press releases, and of course, the radio spots to inform the voters of these changes. And one other thing to add to that is, we're also posting A-frames at any of the old locations that are notifying them to go to the new location. So when they drive up, they would see the sign that says this polling place has moved to wherever. The fiscal impact, it says no additional impact of our current budget, we are hoping that it won't affect it at all, but of course, you've got the cost of all the identification cards that are going out, plus the postcards, which we are getting, you know, quote for now. Recommendation conclusion: The Calver County Board of Elections is taking all steps possible to ensure that the citizens know their polling place location and all other possible options for voting, so that all voters may have their voice heard on the twenty twenty-four election. And we've also posted a map up on our webpages, which shows the new lines. So, do you have any other questions? I like your plan.
I do too.
I mean, my gosh, you all have covered everything. We're trying to go above and beyond, and and we've also, like I said, we're putting highlights on it. Every voter notification card that's going out of the mail has a very bright, it's either pink, bright green, or bright yellow, and it literally says, "Open immediately, your polling place has changed." So we're hoping this will entice the voters not to throw it out, but to open it, read it, and then there's gonna be another postcard with the same information on it, not even about a month later, only this time, we're gonna add other options of voting in it. This is your polling place, but if you wanna avoid lines or anything, you can also have the option to vote by mail or to vote early, and here are all the early vote sites. Correct me if I'm wrong, Governor Moore is well aware of the plan we have in place and what we're doing, am I correct? The governor's aware of all of the state board's plans. Good. That is the reason why, even though we as a county, you know, produced a plan, that's all it was, a plan, until it went to the state, and then the state goes through the plans, and then they choose whether to adopt it or not. And on November twentieth, they adopted our plan. Oh, okay, great.
And you've done this before.
Of course.
It's not the first time this has ever happened.
No, it's not my first rodeo, it's been, what, almost thirty-eight years now, so. Wow. But it is important for the voters to be reminded more than once, to me. The more I send it out, the more they will see it, and hopefully, they will take advantage of it.
Right, because you can't go pick them up and hold them by the hand. No.
No. I don't, I don't know what much more they could do.
No.
Really.
It is unfortunate that in the third district, we have to keep moving that polling location from Fairview to Ward Farm and.
Yes, but I understand the reason of putting it at Ward Farm. I believe it is a much better location, it's accessible, they're not walking through a field, if it rains, there's not ruts, wheelchairs can easily go, and I appreciate the fact that you all decided that Ward Farm would be a good place.
Some more parking too.
Yeah, more parking, a lot more parking, and it was getting a little dangerous with Route Four when they were stopping real quick to pull into behind that library. Yes. So I I appreciate it, and I think that's gonna be a really great location. We just wanna keep getting that word out, so people know that if they don't wanna drive down to Northern, they can go right there to Ward Farm, and they've got eight days to vote there.
And there is a plan to get a permanent location in Dunkirk, so.
Yes, that is in the future.
Moving.
Yes. We're researching that and looking into it.
Oh, I think we've looked pretty good. So it is gonna be important, I hear this every election, where somebody shows up at the wrong place, and they they're told they have to go somewhere else.[1796.33] have to go somewhere else. It's going to be very important that your judges understand that if somebody shows up, they can vote.
Yes.
Just vote a provisional.
If they go to the wrong place and...
Well, I swear, I hear it at every election, that they went to the wrong place, and they told them they had to go to the right place.
We actually have created a sign that explains that, that we're going to put at each polling location.
That says, you know, provisional voting is the way to go if they're in the wrong place.
Right.
Their vote will still count.
You may have some of that extra with the changes, people showing up at the wrong place, so.
We may. But hopefully, those signs will tell them to go to the right place.
Doesn't matter how many signs you put up, we've long learned that they just drive by them.
Right. So we are very busy. It's approximately 14,000 voter notification cards that are going out.
People that are changing?
Yes.
14,000 out of 60-some thousand?
Out of 68,000.
68.
So it's 14,000, and then the postcard, we are going to mail out to everyone, even in the, in the Lusby area and the Dunkirk area, even if they didn't change the polling place. It's as a reminder to tell them, these are the options of voting.
Right, that's standard, right?
Well, yes, the sample ballot is standard, but the postcard, we're going to be sending out about 22,000 to 23,000 for that. That way, we cover like everyone that was already in Patuxent High School, along with everyone that was in Mill Creek. Covers them all, saying, "This is your polling place."
Have you seen any increase in registrations?
Not.
Just normal?
Just as normal. It'll start to pick up usually about the month before the election.
Right before.
When people realize there's an election coming.
And primaries in?
May 14.
May 14.
Right. In the primary election, I think, and I'm hoping, everything should be fairly smooth. I mean, we get maybe a 40-some percent turnout, if we're lucky. And we're usually a little above the state.
And these changes will be in place for the primary?
Yes.
All right.
Try and take care of it as soon as we can. We've got desks piled right now with everything ready to go out. And like I said, we want to go out and start talking to some of the organizations, so if there are any other questions, we can speak to them in person about it.
But if you need any assistance, just let us know.
We appreciate all the assistance. You all are always, you got our backs, and we appreciate it.
Thank you for all that you do.
Absolutely.
You, you, I've worked with you for many years, and your staff is wonderful, and you all are fair, impartial, and you do a great job.
Thank you. Well, it shows we love our jobs, right?
Yes, it does.
That's what they say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. So that brings us to our first presentation, Department of Human Resources Local Government Insurance Trust Training Grant Presentation. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Melanie Woodson, Human Resources Director.
All right, Commissioner Sheriff Cox.
First Sergeant Phelps.
Morning.
Morning.
I'll read the memo. Background, Local Government Insurance Trust, Legit, recently expanded their available training grant funding to include automobile claim loss reduction through the adoption of a telematics system program. Legit defines telematics as a fleet management system that offers real-time data to monitor vehicle metrics centrally. This data enables driver evaluation, corrective action, and additional training, potentially decreasing auto collisions. Discussion, during the last grant cycle, the Department of Human Resources Risk Management Team submitted a grant application on behalf of the Calver County Sheriff's Office to Legit for consideration. The grant request and the amount of $15,312 represents the startup costs and monitoring for the first year of a telematics program for 80 sheriff's office vehicles. Fiscal impact, the $15,312 award will be added to the Calver County Sheriff's Office budget for the telematics program. There are no matching funds required. Conclusion, on December 13th, 2023, the Sheriff's Office was advised in an email from Larry Boland, Director of Field Services and Legit's Loss Control Division, that Legit's Risk Management Committee had approved the grant request in the amount of $15,312. Lee Gaby, Legit's Executive Director, is here today to award the grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, somebody want to explain exactly what it does? Or you all want to introduce yourselves?
I'm Alan Simpson, Risk Manager from Human Resources, and I'm very pleased to introduce Lee Gaby, the Executive Director of Local Government Insurance Trust.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Willis, others. Sheriff Cox, thank you all for letting me join you this morning. I do have the check, actually. That's why I'm here this morning, to make sure you all get the money you deserve. You've really worked hard to put this grant application together. Ms. Simpson, others, all submitted this. You're innovative in the sense that this telematics program may be the first of its kind for county governments that we work with across the state of Maryland. So annually, there's about $100,000 distributed, so this is a pretty significant award for us to do this, and we're happy that it sort of funds the first-year startup of this program. Beyond that, we'll work together, hopefully, to keep it going. We see a lot of benefits that can boost confidence of all your decision-makers when you know that you're getting data faster from the vehicle, straight to the decision-makers, to understand what's happening in the vehicle, what the driver behaviors might be that can help influence safe driving out on the streets. So if you're not familiar with telematics, Verizon is the vendor, I think, in this case, and they've created a platform, I think, that will help get operational information as well as safety information. So think about hard stops, turns, speeding, things that, you know, your engine is going to, and your sensors are going to provide that information. You don't have to wait for a written report, so to speak. So that's kind of the basic idea of innovation and safety data. It was mentioned, I think this is going to affect 80 vehicles at first, so that's a big challenge to get all that done. So this grant pays for some of the installation and training for your staff, and we're very excited and thankful that you are leading the way in doing this kind of thing here in, here in Calver County.
So it's going to monitor the vehicles, how they're used, or?
Yes. It's a monitoring vehicles, real-time monitoring, everything from speed to also engine, everything from, the program can be expanded, once we get it up and running, to also automatically possibly schedule maintenance on the vehicle at the required increments, oil changes. If it throws an engine code, we can have it checked and figure out if it can be driven for the shift, or actually needs to be parked and actually taken to fleet for service. It's a full, everything that a car, I don't know if anyone's familiar with newer cars now, they, with the Ford app and Ford, you know, the Chevy apps and things, they'll monitor a vehicle full-time and tell you, you know, things. This is direct reporting to supervisors and program managers at the sheriff's office to keep touch with everything from the speed to the vehicle conditions.
So somebody sitting at their desk can monitor their vehicle to tell how fast it's going, if it's sitting still, making a turn, and the benefit of this data is?
Complaints. One of our bigger complaints, whether it's perceived or otherwise, is speed. And we want to make sure deputies are, you know, keeping within correct speeds and things. Also, anything from location of the deputies, it could eventually be, we do have, the current dispatch program gives you location, but it can be also merged with that and things that give locations of things. And it gives historical data also, which is good for use of, you know, staffing and things like that.
It'll help you in pursuits, in criminal cases, and help you build cases and...
It's a, because it records also, it actually keeps a historical data. It's good for that, yes.
It'll help change driving behaviors as well.
Driving behavior.
It, it, it does. So the beginning of the year, with the Police Accountability Board, it's all new, not only to us, but the county, the citizens. And I think that we recreated a good dialogue with, with the Police Accountability Board, and the biggest complaint that, that we do get in is the, the driving behaviors or the speed of deputies. And this tool right here, I've been talking about since last February, will help monitor that. That'll help not only the deputy, but us investigate that. If a complaint does come in, and it gives real-time information and data faster, because a lot of times, we have to wait for that for the download. But this gives us accurate information at that current time, which will help us tremendously. And not only that, but the care of vehicles. I mean, as you see our budget, I mean, the, the police vehicles have not only doubled in price, so taking care of those and making them last, and being accountable for the citizens' tax-paying dollars. So I think that helps too as well.
Good. And, and for those of you out there watching, Legit is an outreach of Mako. It's a legal component that we use as a government agency. So what's the benefit to Legit?
Yes, sir. I was going to offer this. As we see the data and share it with, you all share it with us, we're learning how we can improve our training programs and assistance to the county. So this data will help us, help you in a sense, and also help others across the state. So I think this is a real innovation that others will be watching to see how you use this. It can really make a difference, I think, in the training programs for drivers, as we all look for ways to recognize successful drivers, as well as, you know, correction that needs to be taking place. But I just am thankful that you are willing to take this step. It takes a lot of work to get here, and everyone's cooperation will make it successful, I believe.
Thank you.
Like having a body camera in a car.
That's a good way to look at it.
Yeah.
It kind of eliminates the he said, she said, too, with citizens too as well.
Right.
A lot of times, when we had the body camera footage, you get a story, and myself and the Colonel Payne, when we, we put that in place when we were running the Patrol Bureau, we've had citizens come and actually look at the body camera footage, and the stories doesn't, doesn't match up. But this gives us the data faster and accurate, so.
So the grant is for 15,000, and that'll do 80 vehicles?
Correct.
That's to install the equipment. How about, is there some kind of software program or something you have to have in the offices, or?
The program's included. It's a web-based program that automatically is uploaded to the cloud. And supervisors are going to be able to access parts of it. There's going to be, program managers have access to full parts of it. It's all within the, and they, they'll be installed in patrol vehicles to start with, because that's the main ones that are out there. And then, once we expand the per...
So how much of this fleet will it cover?
All of patrol.
All patrol.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
As long as we get those vehicles covered, that are working 24 hours, seven days a week.
But we want to, want to thank you all for willing to be the guinea pigs, and we greatly support the, appreciate the financial support from Legit.
You mentioned Mako, and we were at the Executive Director, Michael Sanderson, yesterday for a meeting, and pass on the good word from across the state. Thank you.
Absolutely. It'll definitely clean up your complaint process.
It will. And it, like I said, it's, just like the body cameras, things were all new to us. And a lot of times, that we can give that information to the citizen if they do have a complaint. And the deputies, we have a tough job to do these days. We have a lot riding on our shoulders, and we're trying to give the best quality police service to our citizens, so.
It's a pretty cheap investment.
They do a great job. You know, I'm thankful to be their sheriff, and I think this tool right here will help us, keep us all safer.
Yeah. Because when you look at the breakdown per unit, it's not a lot of money. Could pay great dividends moving forward.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Cheap investment.
Absolutely. All right.
Thank you.
You're going to give me a check?
Whoever's...
Give the sheriff a check?
Is it one of the big ones?
No, he's got one. Come on up here, we're going to get a picture of the check. We always take pictures.
Well, there's a letter here for Deputy Dean, some of them.
We have Lieutenant Dean come on.
Come on over here, I'll let you go.
Your name's on the letter.
Come on, Dave. Come on up.
Two, two weeks early for the, for the... So you know which I got, Jake?
You can pull John out, all the way out of Fleet Beach.
Yes! All right. One, two, three, smile. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate her all our work. Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Thanks for your all the work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you, sir.
Alan? All cutting them, Alan?
Yes.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
So our next presentation is Department of Community Resources Public Transportation Fair Free Pilot Program. Good morning, Director. You can come as often as you like.
So we go for the Community Resources Public Transportation Fair Free Pilot, and I'm gonna just quickly read the...
And who are you, and who do you have with you?
Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources.
Sandy Wobbleton, Calver County Transportation Division Chief.
Thank you. That one, reminder. Background, in March 2020, with the start of the pandemic, the Department of Community Resources Public Transportation Division, along with the public transit systems worldwide, experienced significant declines in ridership that continue through today. This decline in ridership creates a substantial decrease in fare box revenues, fares passengers pay to board the bus, making this a very insignificant contribution towards transit expenses. Most Calver County public transportation patrons have income that is significantly below the median income level, and use the service to get to work and for nutritional needs. There's a national trend for transit agencies to eliminate fares. Most recently, Charles County Van Gogh and the town of Alexandria has transitioned to a fare-free model. Discussion, Department of Community Resources Public Transportation Division is interested in implementing a six-month fare-free pilot program in FY 2025 to encourage citizens to ride more and ultimately restore ridership levels to pre-pandemic levels. Additionally, the Maryland Department of Transportation, Maryland Transit Administration, M.M.T.A., incentivizes increased ridership in its new funding formula. So there could be financial benefits that make up for any fund loss. Fiscal impact, it is anticipated there will be a $13,500 loss in fare box revenue during the pilot program. Continuing the total yearly loss in fare box revenue would approximate, would total approximately 27,000. However, the cost to maintain the current fare boxes has risen to 46,500, so some savings would be realized in our capital project budget, which requires accounting match. Newly proposed funding formulas indicate an increase in ridership will result in increased grant awards. However, the exact amounts are not known at this time. And then, the recommendation is to air it off the pilot. So I'm just going to run through this presentation. And we're going to take turns talking, because we're both recovering, as you can hear in our voices. So we'll help each other out.
I feel your pain.
Of course, the background we've explained. We're looking at a piloting a fare-free system in the first half of 2025. And if you look at this, oops, sorry. Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry. If you look at this little graphic here, it kind of touts the, the perks of going with free public transit. Obviously, we're looking at lower emissions overall, less traffic on the road, and our services flexible and convenient. And we hope to make it more so with increased ridership.
With our background, of course, when COVID hit, everything plummeted. So our ridership went down, which of course, in turn, caused our fare, fare box revenues to drop. And as of right now, we're still only about 70% of our ridership previous to when the pandemic hit. Our fare box revenue is still less than 2% or barely at 2% of what our operational cost is. So as far as offsetting the cost with the fare box revenues, doesn't really make that much of a dent in the total net cost.
So the highest proportion of trips that we provide are for work and medical. 97% of riders do not have a car. 68% do not possess a driver's license, and 63% of individuals have income under $14,999. So that's our 30% area median income level we're talking about in terms of poverty. I mentioned before that we have a lot of seniors that ride our transit, and, and mostly to meet their nutritional needs at the senior centers. We have congregate transit, but they also do use it quite a bit for medical. We go to the chemo facilities, the dialysis facilities, and those are frequent locations for, for our senior paratransit. We go to the chemo facilities, the dialysis facilities, and those are frequent locations for our senior paratransit.
Why go fare free? As we all found out during the pandemic, that transportation is a vital infrastructure. It was one of the things that basically that did not shut down. We ran continuous service, so we were there. That there's other local transit systems that are going fare free. As we mentioned, Charles County is now in a, they did a pilot. They've now transitioned to automatic, they're fare free, that they are, have no anticipation of changing back unless the commissioners decide they want to do that. Alexandria is fare free. Same thing with them. They've transitioned to fare free without any problems or incidents. Same with Charles County. They have noticed an increase in their ridership, obviously, because now it's fare free. They anticipated that they may have problems, but the problems that they anticipated, they did not have. So they were glad to see that. Our annual revenue is roughly twenty to twenty-five thousand. That's cash fares. So again, not a significant impact as far as trading off against our operational cost. Our fare boxes that we currently have, the electronic fare boxes, a single fare box is fifteen thousand dollars. The fare boxes we have now, they are, they're out of stock. They're out of service. The company that we bought them from is no longer making them, so we can't even fix them when they go out. So when it goes down, we have to replace it with a fifteen thousand dollar fare box. We have nineteen fare boxes. So do the math, it's not cheap to try and upkeep as far as, again. What we get in fares does not offset what we need to do in order to collect and capture those fares.
So. I think I can save you some time.
Sure.
I think based on the information that we have here, I don't know why we're doing a pilot. We should just get rid of the fares.
Yes.
Because at the end of the day, it looks like you're losing money collecting them.
Makes it easier on me.
You need to replace boxes.
Because, yeah, and you don't even have any of what it costs to account for all that money and keep track of the financial end of it. This, just in maintenance, you're eating up whatever you're collecting in fares.
We are now, yes.
It's going to save staff time for sure.
So, Mr. County Attorney?
Yes, sir.
What do we have to do?
I believe the appropriate motion would be to decide whether you want that to be effective in the near future or if you want that to be FY twenty-five and direct that staff discontinue collecting fares.
So for you, is there a time issue? Does it matter?
There is. We had our anticipated start for the pilot would be July first to go. So we can still do that just to start it permanently, but we just have to, we have to, we don't have to do any public hearings because we're not taking away anything other than the fares. So there's not an issue there that we have to worry about as far as MTA or MTA regulations. The only thing is we have people that have paid, previously paid for bus passes, so, and we.
That are good until?
That would be, there's technically a year expiration when we issue them, but we haven't issued any since the beginning of this year. I don't think we've issued any probably in the, any major ones in the last two or three months. But we just want to give those people a chance to utilize those in order to, because I don't know how we process a refund.
July first would take care of that?
Marketing campaign leading, so spend the next six months preparing everybody, you know, communicating with the vendors. Obviously, they need to know as well.
So, Mr. Attorney, legally, what obligation do we have when you sell us a year pass and then you eliminate that?
Frankly, it's, it's rather difficult to calculate how many times they might have used it where they required to.
Well, let me clarify that. They, it's, they have a year to use it. The pass is either a ten-ride pass or a money value, which is usually only twenty or forty dollars. There's no, you're not paying for a year.
Oh, got you.
Yes, no, 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 yeah.
No, you're just buying a number of rides.
You can buy, you can buy bulk passes if you like. Like, we have some agencies that have done that, but it's, it's a ten-ride pass. So it's not, it's not like they've paid for a year.
But you think if we delay this till July one, that'll help us ease that?
Through that, right.
I think so, yes. And like I said, that gives us time to get the word out, social media, and just to let everybody know about it and to get, basically get the system in place, because we still have to be able to capture our ridership. So we need to get our system in place to figure out how to change software for our electronic fare boxes that we do have, because we're still going to have to use those at least just for the ridership, which we can do that for now. So we just have to.
They'll swipe the card.
Yes, yeah, so we can.
There's money being exchanged.
We can still use those for that at the moment. So we just need to get our processes in place.
But if we do what I think we're going to do, if a box breaks between now and then, I wouldn't fix it.
We have, we have, we still have some parts in the office, because when we bought them, we.
Oh, you didn't hear what I said.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
I said if a box breaks between now and July one, I wouldn't fix it.
No, and we won't, we won't pay to have it fixed? No.
Right.
That's correct. We still have parts enough to.
So then that bus, everybody's going to get it free because of the machines part.
Yeah, yeah.
So just rotate that bus through the system. Yeah. I just don't want you spending money, which I don't think you would.
No, 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 absolutely, no. We would, no, we would not do that. I said, we have enough, unless we have a catastrophic failure, we have enough parts to.
If we do what I think we're going to do.
To make it go, and we just don't want to replace it.
Don't fix any more boxes.
No, I, I agree.
Yeah.
So can we make a motion now, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
So I'll make a motion that Calver County Public Transportation goes fare free July first of twenty twenty-four.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, that we go fare free with our public transportation system effective July one, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. How was that?
Thank you so much. This is a win for our citizens. I can't wait to work on this press release.
That's an easy thing to do.
Yeah.
They were all amazing.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next item under presentations is Department of Community Resources Staffing Request for a new Twin Beaches branch library. Good morning.
Good morning. Carrie Wilson, Executive Director of Calver Library, and I have with me Melissa Gray, who's the Branch Manager of Calver Library Twin Beaches Branch. Jeffrey Lewis, our Board President, is also here in the audience in support. So our new Calver Library Twin Beaches branch is set for a mid-April opening, which of course is a date subject to change, because we're not quite close enough to say for sure when, when it'll be finished, finished. This will be an eighteen thousand square foot of indoor space and another three thousand square feet of outdoor porch and terrace space. That's four times the size of the current location in Chesapeake Beach in the Captain's Quarters. So in order to open this building in April, we need to, we're coming to you with a kind of a mid-year request that's really just kind of an off-budget cycle request. In order to open this building, we need additional staff. Our current staff of, I think I'm getting ahead of myself just a tiny little bit. Let me do my slides here. So we currently have about thirty-four thousand annual visitors. We expect that to nearly double with about sixty thousand annual visitors to the library. There are a number, five thousand people who live within walking distance of the library, so it's going to be very easy, easily accessible. That's part of the reason that the library is located now in North Beach with wonderful sidewalk system. So there are a number of wonderful features in this new library, as you've been hearing from me over the past several years. There is a meeting room, which is technology-equipped, so that presentations can be viewed on screens. It's divisible into two, two different-sized meeting rooms. There's one for about sixty-five people and one for about thirty-five, or the whole space will fit about a hundred people. There are exhibit spaces. There's a dedicated teen area, so teens in the beach communities will have a place that is all theirs. There's a wonderful children's department in the library. There's multi-use podcasting booth, maker space, all sorts of creative technology items in it. There's a memory lab, so folks can digitize family history. And then, of course, as we've been discussing, there's an incredible view of the Chesapeake Bay, which some of you have seen from the terrace already. Really pretty spectacular that this is a public space that's going to be completely open to the public, that we've invested in a million-dollar view for residents. They don't have to have purchased. So, as I was getting to, getting to staffing, our, our current staff of three full-time and three part-time, four part-time people.
Five full-time and three part-time.
Two of those full-time people are managers, so I'm not counting them as our, as our staff. So we have two managers, three full-time and three part-time people who work in that location. And that number of people can't, can't work, can't manage to open the building for the number of hours that we're currently open to the public. And so in order to bring additional people on, that's why we're coming to you now, we would need to start posting those openings, doing hiring, interviewing, and training to get people ready to be there on opening day. So by my calculations, we need to start doing the posting of openings in February, which is why we're coming to you now with these requests for FY twenty-five money. So we recognize that this is not part of the normal budget cycle. I think it might also be, I think you all know, but I think for the public, it might be, if you will indulge me, I'd like Melissa to just talk a little bit about what a public services librarian does. I think for everyone who comes to the library, everyone comes for a different reason. So if you come to check books out, that's what you think the library is for. If you come for children's programming or storytime, that's what you think the library is for. But our staff do a myriad of things, which Catherine knows as a former board member, but I'd like to.
Thank you. A public services librarian plays a crucial role in providing a wide variety of services to the community. At a minimum, we hold a bachelor's degree, while many staff hold a master's degree in library and information science. We go through extensive training, over a hundred and fifty hours in our first two years of employment, and we have continuing education throughout our careers to stay on top of technology trends and information resources. Our duties and skills encompass a range of responsibility, responsibilities aimed at each phase of the lives of our community members. So at the earliest ages, early childhood literacy, we have classes that promote brain development, gross and fine motor skills, and socialization for children and their caregivers. Our storytime curriculum is aligned with the Maryland Department of Education's early learning standards to prepare our earliest learners for kindergarten. We provide research assistance. In FY twenty-three, we answered over three hundred thousand questions across the system. We provide readers advisory. We recommend books, resources, and materials based on customers' interests and needs. We offer guidance on information literacy skills. We help users navigate and evaluate information sources. We plan and coordinate public programs, workshops, and events to engage the community. We assist customers with technology-related questions, including computer use and online resources. We collaborate with community organizations, our public schools, and local groups to promote early literacy and library services.
We do all that for a fairly low salary, so it's a pretty incredible return on investment for county dollars. So the ideal staff in this building to meet the needs of the community and to provide classes, events, maintain operations, and ensure safety for these staff in the community is three staff members on the second floor, which is the adult level of the building, and three staff members on the third floor with one manager on site. This level of staffing would provide the same level of service to customers that we do at the other library locations currently. According to Calver County Zen City Survey, Calver Library is the highest-rated community resource in Calver County. Seventy-seven percent of the folks who answered the surveys have a positive view of library service in the August to October twenty twenty-three survey. That's up from seventy-four percent on the January to June survey. Our funding request is for the positions needed for this new library building, as I said, to provide the same level of service available at other locations. Even though there are some additional services, such as the maker space, the podcasting booth, and the memory lab in this building, these additional staff that I'm asking for are really just to provide the basics. We've got a lot of volunteers lined up to help customers use these, the additional technology. And so the staff members that we're requesting are not to do the extras. It's just to provide service in the building. The staffing request, which is for our ideal level of staff, is four hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-seven, so essentially four hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's FY twenty-four staffing costs. But that's our request for FY twenty-five. The April to June funding for that, nearly a hundred and ten thousand dollars, we can find in our current budget. So we're not asking for a mid-year budget adjustment for that. This is just an FY twenty-five request for funding. And that would get us seven part-time staff, starting at the nineteen-one, which is the lowest grade in staff. We would take our three part-time positions, convert those to three full-time positions, because that's the least expensive way to get a full-time position in the building, and then one additional full-time position. So as you can see, that square footage for FTE puts it more in line with the other locations of Prince Frederick Southern and Fairview. So in terms of service hours, this maintains our fifty-seven public service hours a week at each of our locations. It's Monday through Saturday hours. It's the specialty spaces that are open. It allows us to do meal breaks in a reasonable way, our full round of children's programming from birth to three K, K through five, tween programming, teen programming, our adult book discussions, history programs, meeting room access. So the public spaces that are accessible, meeting rooms, the maker space, the podcasting booth, and memory lab that I've mentioned, we have outdoor pickup lockers that will be wonderful for dog walkers in the beaches. As you know, that's a big, a big activity in North Beach. But it's also available for commuters who are not able to come to the library when the library is open. The porches and terrace in the program room, which is used by both, by all ages of children. And then it allows, with that number of staff, it allows people to be working the desk, but also to be able to do one-on-one help for folks. We, there are not every moment of the day, but there are frequently throughout the day, people who need one-on-one help to set up an email address because they need to apply for a job. So that computer training and job application assistance, which is fairly time-intensive. Social services assistance, as we work with community resources and refer people to local resources, is another time-intensive thing. We do faxing and notary services and provide opportunities for the community to volunteer, of course. So this also allows staff to do trainings and meetings. By state law, staff are required to do ninety hours of clock, ninety-clock hours of training every five years. It's the same requirement as teachers, because we're in the teacher's retirement plan. So it allows for that training, the meetings that we have with our teams, which is part of why our service is so fabulous, and representing the library at community events. So this is full access to our twenty-five-plus public computers and laptops that are loanable and usable in the building. As I said, the one-on-one technology assistance, which is a really important part of library service for many of our community members.
Carrie, you charge for any of those services?
We do not charge for any of the services, no. Part of, part of the state code is that public library services are to be free. So again, Plan A's outcome, this is the full, our full level of public services. This is very safe, safe for the community, safe for staff in the building. Classes and events for all ages, with our current emphasis on early literacy. And then, yeah, just, I think I've said that before. Lots of community access to all the things that make the library such a popular community service. So as I, Jennifer has made me aware in finance and budget, there, there are very real finance. We've, we've been talking about this building for many years, and we've known that we needed this additional staff, but the budget has changed, right? The economic outcome and the, what the state's looking at, what the county's looking at. There are realities that are beyond your control, and we understand that. So we've been asked to come up with a, with a Plan B of what, what a more limited version of staffing could look like in order to save some money in the short term. So the minimum number of staff that we would need to, to be physically safe in the building would be two staff on the second floor, two staff. would be two staff on the second floor, two staff on the third floor and one manager. And so that's Plan B, would be still converting those three existing part-time to three full-time and adding just five part-time positions.
Excuse me, so your total FTE would be 11 for Plan B?
Mm-hmm.
And your total FTE for Plan A would be 13.2 FTEs?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a really, it's not a significant difference.
It's not a significant difference, but I'll just make one comment while you're, while you're finishing your presentation. I've, I've done a really big comparison, and it's like minus two FTEs, all the money the county has put into this building, we get so much taken away from us if, if we take away two FTEs. We get a tremendous amount taken away from us. But I'll let you continue.
I was just going to say what Commissioner Grasso has just said so eloquently and short lens concisely. Yeah. It really, it, the, the difference between having an extra person who can go sit down with someone and do a one-on-one computer assistance, or go do a, go do a program and go do a story time with our littles and our babies, that's all, that's all we're talking about, is that ability to have that extra person, those two extra people. And it does make a world of difference. So that, it really does, like, our, our children's programming is our most important thing, and we, you know, we're, we're the game that's, we're the only game going when it comes to early literacy, right? That's not the school system's responsibility. That's parents and the community, some community organizations. So that's the one, that, that's the thing we're not willing to, to stop doing, of course, is, is our preschool programming. But we would need to cut out adult programming and limit our partner programs. We would need to limit the access to the Maker Space because there wouldn't be staff to go help set up, even if we had volunteers coming in to do those things. It does still require staff, people to help do setup. Faxing takes someone away from the desk for up to five minutes, depending on, because faxing is still a required service for a lot of banking and mortgage kinds of things. So that would be a challenge without additional staff, to be able to staff the, the desk. We would, you know, our ability to send staff to training would be quite compromised because people would need to be working the desk every time they were at work. There wouldn't be those extra people around to help do training, to work on team activities, to be participating in community events. And we would, you know, we'd be calling Tom and Bob much more often because we wouldn't be able to troubleshoot our own building activities. While the computers would be there, there wouldn't be people available to do that assistance and training. And the Maker Space technology, we would need to, to limit access to that without adequate staff. I didn't linger on all this as, as much. Catherine, you said you'd studied it. I should have, like, spent more time on that. It's, this is the scenario that I hate, and so I don't want to spend time on this, right? That, that level of service where we're just not able to do for the community in the beaches, that what we do at Southern or what we do at Prince Frederick or at Fairview, that's, as you said, we're not willing to open a brand-new building. That's what the community has been needing for so long. That's why, that's why we all agreed to build this facility. It's because that 4,600 square feet that's currently there in Captain's Quarters is just not providing an adequate service to the, to the beach community. So now that we've got this building that is doing everything it's supposed to do for the community, we're not really, we can't open it with those sorts of limited services. So in order to be able to provide the right, the same level of service and do an equitable job across the county, if, in, in this scenario with that number of staff, if we close on Monday mornings, we could then move a staff and a half person over to Twin Beaches in order to be able, like Catherine pointed out, just adding a couple bodies makes all the difference in being able to provide that level of service. Monday is the day that we have the least number of story times scheduled, and so that would have the least impact on public service across the county. I don't think that'd be a super popular, like, this is our last, that'd be a last-ditch effort, but if the money is not there, the money's not there. So that, that's kind of where, that's as far as we've been able to get in terms of planning of what we could do with less, with fewer staff and less money. That's how we would gain those staff, so. That's where, that's what we've, that's where we're at right now. Interested in what questions you have or...
So my concern is, are we able to hire these people that we need? You know, we're going to have an opening in March, and are we going to find the people needed to?
We have not had a challenge finding fabulously qualified folks. So every time we post a job, we have a fantastic applicant pool. So we currently have, we would post some of these openings internally to start, and so I know we've got people who are part-time who want to be full-time. So I'm very confident that we can fold, fill the full-time. We've got some subs who are interested in being part-time, and so mostly we'd be back filling our part-time positions.
And my other concern, we have FY24, April to June, and we're going to be opening in March, and then we need to get these people trained.
Yes, that's why I kind of need you all to make a decision quickly, because we can, we can start the posting and hiring and training immediately, but I can't, I know what I can do with my current budget. I have some state per capita increase from last year that we haven't spent. We've had some retirements that have some wiggle room in our salary budget. I can act on FY24 tomorrow, but I can't do something in '24 that we can't sustain until '25, which is why, which is why I'm coming to you all for a kind of preemptive FY25 budget decision.
And the other part of that is, when we hire internally and there's that shift across the board, then the weight of, of rehiring is shared across the board. It's not going to be all new hires for that location. It's going to be a few new hires for that location and a few new ones elsewhere. Yes.
You touched on volunteers. What's your volunteer pool look like?
We have phenomenal number of volunteers who, who help us with all sorts of stuff. So we do, they, they're doing a lot of our programs. They're doing a lot of teaching and classes and events. But there are also our daily delivery that comes in. We've got volunteers who are taking books out of boxes, scanning it to see where it goes. They're also doing our pick list. So you place a hold, we've got volunteers who are going to find that book and scan it in for a hold. So those sort of like, it's really important work, but I'm going to label it as a menial task. Those tasks that don't require training beyond scanning and reading a screen, that, that's what volunteers do for us.
I'm sure it'd be a fun environment for a lot of people.
It's super fun, yeah. We're, we're fabulous to work with.
I would imagine where you are now, you don't have much room, so you probably cannot accommodate a whole lot of volunteers and are looking forward to expanding that in the new library.
So we started expanding already, because we want to have them already trained and ready to go for our new space. So we started about a year ago, expanding our, our, our volunteer pool at the Twin Beaches branch. We have them trained, we have them on different days, at different time shifts, and they're excited to move forward. And in the meantime, we're also taking applications, identifying areas where volunteers can help us in the new branch. And as we get this new equipment, getting them trained, we have a plan in, in March to get them trained. So when we do open, that we're able to take advantage of their skill sets as well, so.
How many do you have now, volunteers?
About 12.
About 12?
In our current space.
Okay.
That come very consistently, weekly. And then, like I said, we're, we're taking volunteers. We've been, we have one volunteer who has gone to 3D printing trainings in Prince George's County in preparation of helping us with our 3D printers, so.
Good.
So is there any state-required training that your employees have to have?
Yeah, that's the, the bachelor's degree requirement for public services librarians, and then those 90 hours of clock time every five years. And the, the 90 hours within your first two years, that's state requirement as well.
So all these, all these full-time hires have to be certified librarians?
Part-time and full-time are, are all library associates, yes.
And you, you've mentioned several times, safety and security of your staff. Have you had safety, security issues in your other locations?
We have really, really highly-trained staff, and we have a fantastic relationship with the Sheriff's Department. They're very supportive. So when there are, if, if and when there are security concerns, which is very rare, the Sheriff's Department does more, walk-throughs more often, but, you know, we're just talking about being able to, you know, if you've got a crowd of teenagers, that you've got enough adults on hand to...
Do you have homeless at the Twin Beaches, and do you bring them in for shelter like they do in Prince Frederick?
So we are considered, you know, a, what is the right word? Is the, when it's too hot or too...
Warming center.
A warming center. And over, I've been at the Twin Beaches location for about five years. There are persons that experience homelessness, but it has decreased over time and since COVID, rather than increased.
I know when I, when I was a Board of Library trustee, there was a resistance to police support as opposed to the possibility of having social workers on hand. And, and I have an opinion on that, but that's all I'll say.
So I would say that we have been actively pursuing a positive relationship with our Sheriff's Office, and we do welcome them to come in and walk through. And if we do have an issue, that that is a phone call to our Sheriff's Department to say, you know, we really could use some, some walk-throughs periodically at, you know, X, Y or Z location. So I think that although that may be a perception in the past, I think that we have really tried to move forward and, and, and change that perception to be a positive relationship.
That's great, thank you.
Good. Any other questions?
I have none.
All right. So we'll take this under advisement, and we'll let you know as soon as we can.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
The library is beautiful.
It is.
It is.
It's going to be showcased, I'm quite sure.
Very exciting, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that brings us to public comment. Mr. County Attorney?
Mr. President, there is no one online. Is there anybody in the room that would like to provide public comment?
All right. Then that brings us to Commissioner Reports. Mr. Cox?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Haven't seen you for a while, so Happy New Year to everyone. I do want to keep the Hawkins family in your prayers. He was a longtime volunteer at Huntington Firehouse, and he did pass away, so condolences to the Hawkins family. Just something else to keep in mind, the 24 legislation session starts tomorrow. There's been 565 bills, prefiled bills already. Just maybe want to keep your eyes on, on the bills that have been already prefiled. And lastly, wish my son and his son a happy birthday this week. Thank you.
Good job. Mr. Irwin?
It's the start of a new year. I hope everybody enjoyed time with their families during the holidays, and I hope everybody gets through this time of sickness. It seems like everybody has it. Hopefully, we can get through this. We need some cold weather, which we might get next week, and maybe that'll help things. I'm looking forward to a new year. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Vice President Grasso?
Yeah, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I hope you all enjoyed your holidays. About half the people I knew were sick and got better, and then the other half got sick. So it was, it was a pretty, pretty much a downtime for a lot of us. Also, Anne Marie Gardens, I did the, I toured the Festival of Lights. Oh my gosh, I was hoping Stacy would be here today. That was really nice, but the best thing was my husband and I walking behind families and the explanation from the children. The children were so enthralled, and it was done so well. I did my very first Eagle Scout Award, and a little nervous. We had, we had celebrated my husband's birthday, so we made some adjustments, and he went with me. And the family was absolutely wonderful, and I learned so much about Eagle Scouts and, and that Neil Armstrong was one, and Martin Luther King Jr., and Sam Walton, and Hank Aaron, and only 4% of individuals involved in scouting become Eagle Scouts. And the Murphy slash Fitzgerald family was an outstanding family, and I really enjoyed it and looking forward to doing more. So thank you all.
Thank you. So I want to take this opportunity to thank our county staff, the Fair Board, the Optimist Club for the Christmas festival that was in Prince Frederick on December the 9th. I know we had a little meeting after that, but just want to reiterate what a great activity that was that day, and we're still, I still hear compliments when I meet people about what a great event that was. And had a gentleman last week stop by the office and said, when he was here, he called his wife and said, you got to come to Prince Frederick. It's like Hallmark in Prince Frederick.
Oh, it was.
And so want to thank staff again. The only issue is, with excess, we're going to want more. So next year, I think we already have some ideas of ways to make it bigger and better. So want to, again, thank staff. I know it's not an easy thing. It took a lot of work. Parks and Rec, economic development, and all those staff people out there that worked on that event. Thank you very much.
But I've never seen that many happy people in Prince Frederick at one time.
There you go.
That's the truth.
There you go.
It was, it was unbelievable. It was, it was a good day.
It was. It was. So again, want to thank all of them for those efforts. And also during the holiday season, 97.1 radio station had a competition with high school courses. And if you didn't know, Calvert's Chorus won. And for that, they got $5,000 towards their chorus program. So want to congratulate the Calvert Chorus. If you listen to 97.1, you heard the different bands, and they did a great job, so we want to congratulate them for that. Also, I want to ask that you keep Ruthie Buckler, staff person in her office, in her prayers. She's having a little medical issue right now, and want to make sure that you keep her in her prayers. Want to remind everybody about the storm event today. Make sure you're prepared, especially if you live in a low-lying area on the coast, because we're going to have very strong southerly winds, and if you've lived there very long, you know what happens when we have a south wind and you live on the water. So make sure you're prepared. You can get sandbags at Mount Holt Barstow and Appeal Convenience Centers if you need those. They expect the worst of the storm to be late this afternoon, between 5:00 and 7:00. So you have, still have some time to get ready. We want to make sure everybody's safe. Also, again, want to extend our condolences to Commissioner Pat Nutter for the loss of his wife, Millie. Today, again, is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so if you see a police officer, please say thank you. They don't get that very often, so please take that opportunity. And just want to remind everybody that Monday is Martin Luther King Day, and take a moment to remember the commitment and service that he provided to all of us.
So the tidal surge with that storm that Commissioner Hans was talking about is about four and a half feet, plus you have wave height over that. So it's, it's going to be pretty significant, because they're calling for winds up to 60, 70 miles an hour.
Yes.
So make sure, make sure everybody's safe.
That's right. Especially if you live in a low-lying area, it's going to be significant.
So Commissioners, because of your kind words to one of our staff, you know, they always pay attention even when they're homesick, and Ruthie thinks, wants to thank the Board of County Commissioners.
Aw.
Don't remiss her.
We do.
Ready for the motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Okay. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to general provisions, Article Sections 3-305B3 to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related thereto. Seven, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. Eight, to consult with staff, consultants and other individuals about pending or potential litigation. And fifteen, III, to discuss cybersecurity because public discussion would constitute a risk to deployments or implementation of critical infrastructure or security devices.
Second? Have a motion in the second that we go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Everybody have a great day and be safe.